Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's county council meeting. We'll start off with our invocation from Family Fellowship Church of God. Josh Vandergraft is here to pray for us, and Councilman Terry Hollander will lead us in the pledge. Please stand and remove your caps.
Let's bow our heads. Father, we're so thankful tonight for this great nation that we live in. And Father, tonight, we ask that you grant wisdom and understanding to all those who will be discussing business at hand, Father. I pray for peace, God, to overwhelm this room, and that, Lord, you will guide all discussion. And, Father, as we discuss and decide on what will make this county great to live in, and, Father, for the future of St. Charles County, we ask, Lord, that you bless everyone here, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
We'll move on to public comments. Just so you know, for those of you who are not familiar, which it looks like most of you are probably familiar, judging by the massive crowd we have on hand tonight, we take three speakers on each subject, three for, three against. We give you three minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, that means your time has expired, and I will ask you to be seated. So our first speaker for tonight is?
Randall Burks.
Mr. Burke? Come on up.
My name's Randy Burks. I live at 3188 Willoben Drive, and that's halfway between Cox Hill and Junk Station Road, if there was a tornado went through there a few years ago. Anyway, my wife and I would like to build a single detached garage behind our property. Around July 6th, I presented my situation to the Planning and Zoning Board, and I was requesting a variance to allow me to build that garage within seven and a half feet, or at seven and a half feet to the boundary line. During that meeting, there were three votes in favor of that variance and one vote opposed. I thought I was successful at that point in time, but that was when the board chairman informed me that I probably would need to take this to the county council for appeal. Anyway, so that's what brings me here this evening. 3188 Willoben Drive is a corner lot. It eagles Hill Ridge and Willoben Drive. I have no neighbors to the west, which I think there's a packet that has some pictures, but I have no neighbors to the west. I would like to build this garage approximately where this arrow is pointing. Another thing that you can see in that picture is a utility box where the electrical power for the subdivision is supplied there. So there's already a pretty substantial apparatus setting in that same proximity. My garage would actually sat behind that utility. You know, seven and a half feet is, sounds like a small amount, but it's still actually 20 feet from the edge of the road. There is an existing parking pad that the previous owner had put in there. It's been in place probably about 10 years, I would guess. And as it is right now, it's, it, there's a mixture of gravel and concrete, and because of the utility box, and I have a six-foot privacy fence there also, it's just aesthetically, it's not, it's not very pleasing. And so it was, you know, in my opinion, or my wife's opinion, we would like to have, to be able to put this garage there. And, you know, one of the things that the variance, the board suggested is that we do it with a 20-foot setback. But because my property backs up to Duckett Creek, a 20-foot setback, and my yard, my backyard is very shallow, a 20, even a 20-foot setback puts the building in the middle of my backyard, and virtually, I have no backyard. So it's not really a practical place to put the garage. And with the existing-
Okay. Thank you for your time. When the bill comes up, if we have further questions, we'll call you up and talk to you about that then.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is?
Would be Arnie Deanoff.
Mr. Deanoff.
Thank you, members of the county council. Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and county resident. First thing I'd like to touch upon is approval of purchases in the highway department for the purchase of $386,000 of bulk salt. I've been asking you for the last two or three years, and for the highway commissioner, to contact the City of O'Fallon Department of Engineering and Street Department, where we run a national consortium for street and road materials. It's called the City of O'Fallon National Street and Road Consortium. There could be a possible savings of a large amount, because we join up with other municipalities and other jurisdictions throughout the region to come up with a bulk discount. So I don't understand why we're not doing some cooperative intergovernmental agreements rather than paying top dollar for our salt. My condolences and sympathies go out to the city of Charlottesville, Virginia, and our counterparts in the county of Alba, I'm not sure how you pronounce this, Albermerl, which is 105,000 people located in Virginia. Unfortunately, on Saturday, the loss of life through the protests of Heather Hyer, 32, and also Virginia State Troopers Lieutenant H.J. Collin, 48 years of age, and Trooper Pilot Burke M.M. Bates, 40 years of age. We need to send our condolences and our sympathies to them and their families, that they heal. The Wentzville School District is growing by leaps and bounds. I'm sure most of you may have read the Post-Dispatch article. The Wentzville School District is our nation's third fastest-growing school district in our entire country. Missouri's number-one fastest-growing school district is Wentzville School District, and they are the 10th-largest school district in Missouri in terms of student population. They have 16,400 growing everyday students, 25,000 lots that are build-ready, ready, shovel-ready right now, with all the utilities already in place, 750 new students each and every school year through 2025. We shall salute the Wentzville School District today and tomorrow. Today was the opening of ribbon cutting that I just came from at Stony Creek Elementary School on Highway Z, which is 101,000 square feet of instructional classroom space. Tomorrow, the opening of Wabash Elementary on Golden Gate Parkway is another 101,000 square feet of instructional classroom space. And finally, I have a complaint for the county auditor, Mr. Statler. Why is Sheriff Scott Lewis playing politics and political vendetta games towards me in conjunction with the St. Charles County Ambulance District? Violations of, he's shirking his violations, both statutory and legal mandated obligations, to follow the law when it comes to me. And I have to take my hats off to the sheriff's department employee, minus the sheriff that I have zero respect for, but I do have respect for-
Thank you, Mr. Deanoff. That's end of our time for today. Do we have any other speakers? With that, we will close public comments. We'll move on to oral report from the county executive.
None, none this evening, Mr. Chairman.
No report from the county executive. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made to approve, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to our Resolution 1708.
Resolution number 1708, sponsored by Joe Brazel. A resolution reappointing Ted Struckoff to the Board of Trustees of the Hancock Bottoms Drainage District. Whereas pursuant to the St. Charles County Charter, Article 10, Section 10.608, 2014, the county council passed Resolution 02-09, establishing a Board of Trustees for the Hancock Bottoms Drainage District, and appointing three residents of the district, namely Leonard Nadler, Tom Kessler, and Ted Struckoff, as its first members of the term stated therein. And whereas by Resolutions 04-09, 06-03, 06-08, 07-10, 08-13, 09-08, 10-11, 11-08, 12-08, 13-08, 14-07, 15-05, and 16-05, the county council has since reappointed or appointed district residents to the board, and its current members are Ron Beerbaum, Tom Kessler, and Ted Struckoff. And whereas because Ted Struckoff's term expires on August 25, 2017, the council seeks to reappoint him to a new three-year term beginning August 26, 2017. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the St. Charles County Council makes the following appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Hancock Bottoms Drainage District. Ted Struckoff to a three-year term beginning August 26, 2017.
Any question on this resolution? Seeing none?
A resolution reappointing Ted Struckoff to the Board of Trustees of the Hancock Bottoms Drainage District. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Resolution 1708 passes. We'll move on to bills for introduction, starting with Bill 4503.
Bill number 4503, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by John White, an ordinance reversing the Board of Zoning Adjustments decision on variance application, VAR 17-07.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on this bill?
I wasn't aware that he had three people on this adjustment board say yes and one oppose.
Yes.
So it takes more than a supermajority to get it through?
It takes four to approve.
So you, is it a seven-member?
No, it's five members with two alternates.
Okay.
Apparently, that particular evening, one of the regular members and the two alternates were not available, so they proceeded with four members.
Okay.
Had their, one of, one of the applicant's points is potentially, had a fifth member been present, the vote might have been different. But in any event, you've got to get four favorable votes.
Okay.
And there was a, there is a letter from Councilman White, this is in his district, supporting this bill.
Yeah. And there's no, I read, I didn't see any opposition from neighbors or the homeowners association or anything.
No, sir. I have support, verbal support from the homeowners association.
And he has a letter for us.
Okay.
That he turned in also. Mr. Hammond?
I was just going to say, I had an opportunity to review this, spent some time at home looking at it, and I think the gentleman should be granted his variance, so I'll be supportive.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4504.
Bill number 4504, requested by Craig Tokowski, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission State Block Grant Agreement, Amendment Number One, Airport Improvement Program Grant, Project 16-111A-2, and accepting said grant in the amount of $517,758 for design runway, electrical lighting system rehabilitation, and new vault at Smart Field Airport.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4505.
Bill number 4505, requested by Michelle McBride, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a second amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of O'Fallon for collection and dispersment of the city's nuisance abatement special tax bills.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none? Thanks for coming. Move on to 4506.
Bill number 4506, requested by Hope Woodson, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental grant agreement, 17-0191-PHI-17, between St. Charles County and Missouri Foundation for Health, for receipt of funds in an amount up to $20,000, and amending the 2017 budget adopted by ordinance 16-104 by appropriating additional funds in the general fund budget, Department of Public Health.
Any questions or comments about 4506? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4507.
Bill number 4507, requested by Mike Hurlbert, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, an ordinance amending Sections 405.060 and 405.080(c) of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU-CMO, to remove weddings and wedding receptions from the definition of the rural recreational activities, and authorize certain buildings and open spaces for wedding and wedding receptions as conditional uses in the agricultural zoning districts, subject to certain limitations.
Any questions or comments on 4507?
I have an amendment for the bill. Let's see. Joanne, do you know what page it says? Did you do this?
The change is at the very end.
It's page 73, I believe.
On page 73?
I believe it's Section 2C9 on page 73.
Yes, whoever made us read 72 pages to get to the changes, that wasn't appreciated last night about midnight.
Well, the-
The problem is, Councilman, that the charter requires that certain sections be set forth when you're going to do something. So I had a different way of drafting, but I think they're trying to be consistent and not the hunt and peck that old county council used to do.
Well, the justice, here's the amendment, it's after the, after the word "parties", add, and I'm trying to find the page where that word "parties" is.
It's page 73.
Page 73.
Mm-hmm. Number nine.
Where's it, see, that's the problem here. Look, Joe. I don't have 73 pages.
You got it on mine.
I don't have 73 pages. It's the first problem. I don't, my pages, I only have 62 pages. All right. Spaces for weddings receptions and our private parties. On page 73, number nine, after the word "parties", I'd like to offer an amendment that would say, add, "On real estate parcels not smaller than 20 acres, provided that the location of any such buildings or structure shall be at least 150 feet from all property lines." That's the amendment.
Amendment has been put forward. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
We have a second for discussion? Any questions or comments on this?
Do you want to have a discussion?
We're having a discussion now.
On this?
On this.
The reason, what, what, the way this came about is, as you all know, is Mr. Cronin wanted that one individual, who had 25 acres, by the way, so it would have been permissive. But, um, so the categories, Jennifer cleaned some of this stuff up, because before, if you had a pumpkin patch, you could also have weddings and build a structure and everything else. So it's now, it's in categories. So if you have a corn maze or a pumpkin patch, whatever, that's one category. If you have a wedding venue with a structure, you want to have, if you want to build it a structure, then you have to have 20 acres with setbacks. And the purpose of this is, is talking to Mr. Cronin, he was wanting to introduce the bill to begin with, and he's comfortable with this, because it gives more ground to set your somewhat commercial building. I'm really not happy with this at all, actually, but I'm trying to be accommodating, and it gives you opportunity to move the building away farther from other residential or agricultural properties. And so that's the purpose behind it. I realize it's a CUP, so we'll be able to look at them individually, but this sets the criteria where, in my area, it's more agricultural, and it keeps it that more agricultural field, rather than being a five-acre parcel. And so that's the purpose of it, and it somewhat satisfies the wineries, because they were upset about the, having to, not, you know, not, they could just, anybody could just do a wedding venue, and then just start selling alcohol on the weekends and not have to follow the winery rules. And so that's another issue.
Mr. Cronin?
I think, I get his point, but the other thing is, I think this is a sloppy way of doing it by tacking it on this bill, because what this is defining, this, this page 72 and 73, are instances where conditional use is required, okay? So you're just saying, well, we require conditional use for there. When that, when they come before us for conditional use, maybe it needs to be 20 acres in his district, but maybe it needs to be five acres in downtown St. Charles and Mike's districts. So as long as it's going before the council for conditional use, we have the point, that we, at that particular opportunity, we have the ability as a council to stick whatever requirements we need to make, make it, you know, copacetic with the neighborhood, like we did in Valley Farms. I have another issue with it besides that, and I spoke with Mr. Herbert today about it. By, and on page 73, on line 12, we deleted facilities with meeting rooms or places for conference, meetings, weddings, and wedding receptions, and other public assemblies. And let's go back to like, very like a pumpkin patch. If someone wants to have, has a building there, and they want to have birthday parties for kids, for Hyer, for whatever, okay? I think that should be a conditional use permit, too. By striking line 13, like they have, I question whether we even are going to allow folks to conditional use for that particular purpose. Now, there's some loose interpretations of that, that me and Mr. Herbert had discussed, and we've got, Herbert, I'm sorry, and we've got two weeks to work on this, but I like the conditional use permits in agricultural areas, because you can take the concerns of the neighbors when you craft the conditional use permit. I don't want to take that line 13 out of there and lose that ability to regulate facilities for conferences, meetings, and other public assemblies. And I get exactly what Joe wants to do, but I think we can still do that within the confines of the conditional use permit process that we have now.
Mr. Hammond?
I guess the only problem I see with this is that would include other private parties, not just wedding venues. So maybe this leads to go before private, other private parties, or move other private, make an exception to private parties.
Do you guys think that maybe we should have a more of a work session on here to work out if, are you feeling that, Joe, are you saying you're not uncomfortable because of wording on it?
I think we need to discuss, I mean, let's face it, we got this, most of us didn't have a chance to look at this much till this weekend. I mean, I took a long time getting through this. I found out all the different conditional use permits for all types of nasty adult places. Before I got to this, it was kind of a different reading. But anyway, I think we ought to have a discussion. I'd like to hear what Mr. Herbert says as part of this, too. And, I mean, I'm a big fan of conditional use permits, because I think they're a good way of crafting permits to keep peace in the neighborhood, and also let people do what they want to do with their property, but I'm not sure-
Cut off discussion, but I like your idea, or Joe's idea, of doing it in a work session. I, I think there's a whole lot more questions that we have on this. Why we treat wedding different than any other event baffles my mind. I don't, I don't, I don't understand-
Congratulations or anything, yeah.
I don't understand the difference between a wedding reception and a class reunion. I've been to some class reunion parties that were, that were, you know, kicked up the heels pretty good, so I don't know why we would treat the two parties as different events. To me, they're, they're one and the same.
Do you have a question for Mr. Herbert?
He knows what I was, I think, I think he wants to probably, you probably want to explain to them what you explained to me this afternoon. How's that sound?
Sure. So the words "conference" and "public assemblies" was removed from that portion, and so that weddings and wedding events and private parties could be separated out as a specific use. The issue we were running into, or the concern that was being raised, was by having conference as part of the overall arching number of things that can happen, opens itself up to, are we really talking about allowing a use appropriate in a rural district? The rural recreational use, that definition in the agricultural zoning district seemed like it was, there's a lot of things that could happen there. So we wanted it to be a little bit more specific in terms of calling out wedding, wedding receptions, as well as the word "facilities" is not defined in the UDO, and without that clear definition, it's, we don't know what that means, how that can be housed. So we specifically call out building, structure, or open space that houses the wedding, wedding reception, or a private party. So that's the first part of it. The second part of it is, the CUP will dictate the size of the, the structure, the building, or the open space area that's going to accommodate these events. The CUP, by that definition, then the site plan will dictate whether it can meet occupancy, parking, and all the other requirements. That will limit the size of that party, that event, whatever it is. They can have a high school reunion, as long as it doesn't exceed the requirements set forth in the CUP. That private parties is kind of all-encompassing for everything else up to that size. So we're, there's not open-ended as much as it was before. It's more clear in terms of what can be done on that property within the scope of the size of the space.
Also, he told me earlier today, there are no pending wedding facility applications before, before, before their department. So we do have time to work on this.
The other thing that we've talked about is, by adding the 20 acres, and again, we'll talk about it in the work session, but by adding the more stipulations, is we're in the process of trying to slim down the CUP process by applicants, where we don't have to sit there and do the CUPs all the time, and make it more of an understanding that what's acceptable and what's not. And so that's another reason why, by putting perimeters of the 20 acres in an agriculture area for a wedding venue, it makes that, streamlines that process a little bit.
So currently, we have an amendment on the table. The amendment's been put forward. We have a second, but now I'm hearing that we, you may rather have a work session on this. So I'm asking, upon further review, do you want to withdraw your amendment? And we'll do a work session on it, and then we'll look at maybe refining the bill, because it sounds like Mr. Cronin has some things that he would like worked in that, too. Would you like to go that route?
Fine. I'll make a motion to withdraw the amendment, and then offer up a, or request a work session at the next council meeting, before the next council meeting.
We have a 5:30 ad hoc committee meeting.
Can we push, can we push the, well, we could, how long, what do we need, a half an hour for this, or how long you think we need for this?
This would be the only thing we would discuss. It would be up to you guys as to how much time you think we need.
I would say we'll move our meeting up to 5:00 and have this at 6:30, you think?
That works for me. Does it work for you?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
And could we get some suggestions? You know what I was after today, I think, when we talked. Can you get some suggestions from you guys, you know, the ways you think to look at this to, to alleviate my concerns on his as well?
Yeah, I think the only concern about that is being, trying to be too specific in all the other types of uses that we could identify. I feel like we're not going to be able to identify every potential use, if that's what you're thinking or talking about. So that's just something to be aware of, that I don't know if we can do that laundry list of every potential use that could fit within, along with a wedding venue kind of thing, so.
So Mr. Brazel put forth that he is moving to remove his amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second has been made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The amendment has been removed. On the current bill of 4507, which we're still under discussion with, do we want to leave this on the table, and then maybe look at tabling at the next meeting? Do you want to table it now, or are we good?
No, I think-
I think we just leave it on.
Yeah, leave it on. We can table.
Just trying to make sure I understand where everybody's at. We'll move on to 4508.
Bill number 4508, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, an ordinance amending Sections 405.060, 405.525.g, 410.180, 410.450, and 412.080 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development Ordinance Regarding Performance Guarantees.
Questions and comments on this one? Start with who? You both side at the same time?
I was just going to say that I'm going to make a motion to table this, this bill, and we, the ad hoc committee, is this, we're something that we've been kind of working on a little bit, so we want a little more time to review it, since we just got it on Thursday.
Okay. Second. I have motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? 4508 is tabled. Speaking of tabled bills, substitute bill 4498.
Make a motion to remove from the table.
Motion's been made, second. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor removing that bill from the table?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So the bill is off the table.
So just, how do I do this?
Actually, I guess the bill would be on the table, as the case would be. So now, what would you like to do?
Make a motion to remove, or make a motion, or do we vote on it? Just vote it down?
Make a motion to withdraw.
Make a motion to withdraw.
Make a motion to withdraw. Substitute bill 4498.
We have a motion to withdraw, 4498. Do I have a second?
It requires concurrence of three council members.
Sorry. Do I have three?
Yes.
Yes.
I actually have four, so we're good. So that bill has been removed. I actually have four, so we're good, so that bill has been removed, any announcements or miscellaneous for today?
No, just, Monday's the big day out in the wine country, we, there's a lot of Eclipse events, a lot of parties out there, and stuff, so everybody's welcome, hopefully Chris Hunt has traffic under control, is Mo Doc cooperating any better? Is Mo Doc cooperating with us?
We've got some calls in to him, we're working on it.
Calls into him, yeah, that means he has returning calls, typical.
Is it true, 1.2 million people in St. Charles?
No, sir, it's not.
Oh, good.
Captain, are we good with our eyeglasses for the Eclipse?
I think so.
You did a great job modeling them last time, so that-
Ninety seconds of excitement.
They're 90 seconds of excitement, it's too many jokes to be made with that comment, so we're gonna move on.
Do I have a motion to dismiss?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we are dismissed.